I don't understand why. I'm waiting on everybody.
You give us a PDF. We can read it.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, this does not belong here.
Oh, I know what you're saying. Except it's just a spreadsheet, right?
I might actually look at it.
And I'm like, I'm pretty happy.
Yeah, every time.
Is everybody there? I do.
They're all different.
Oh.
Yeah.
It feels like part of the process, right?
We got it, we got it.
Norton doesn't have a plate anymore.
I never had one.
You know, I think every time we have a meeting, the next day I should order plates. And that's hard to go. I think it's going on the agenda.
It's not me, too, the plates.
The whole game, too. Yeah, whole, yeah.
It's kind of a little R B screen.
So you have mine on order? In the, so, stand up, please, constantly. For the plates? You have a little, you have mine on order?
I order them. Every time, every Tuesday I will say or something like I need to order those that I forget.
And what should I need?
How does the rally sound?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, aren't you being proud of that?
It's wonderful. It's also nice that I'm here. And they will come.
So, I found the ground.
Right.
So I will, they just made the decision. But they also, I can't process. Yeah. So I will write on our, I decided to, just to honor the question. This is, so.
Good friend. So here, and take those.
Uh, what if this?
And that kind of.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah. Oh. I'll try to look at it.
So.
Yes. We keep going and someone got it.
Sorry.
They put, they put the film now in the, you know, even that. But they're going on YouTube channel. So.
Thank you.
All you have to do is, we do YouTube. You should find it, it should be great, great.
No, no.
No.
Thank you.
It should. It's very complicated.
Sounds like my thought, I'll show you the answer.
Or.
Please. My shit is. No.
This is. I did a lot. You know, there. Okay. Any questions about that?
I was. I don't know.
Okay. The opposite. I don't. I keep my eyes on the table. We can check.
Serious. Now to call the order. You have immediately stamped the pledge.
The pledge is to comply with the United States of America. In the name of our God, the Lord Jesus Christ, the one nation, America, in this world where there are changes necessary.
If you're wondering why we were waiting, we had six fifteen start with our board meeting. That's why we waited until then. First item is the adoption of the agenda, the motion.
Second.
Session.
Second.
Discussion, new discussion. So there was an item on the agenda before or during the board meeting to do a assessment on it that we're going to. There's been a request to move that back. So we're gonna throw out that and move that back sometime. So we had, we're going to make a motion to have a meeting. So yeah, we're gonna make a motion to have it be tomorrow. Any second on that?
I have a open motion first, so we didn't vote on, we didn't vote on the adoption of the agenda.
Okay, let's, because it would be. Okay.
Jean.
Hi.
Linda.
Hi.
Jessica.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Nora. John.
Hi.
Okay, so now a motion to have that, risk assessment tomorrow. Take a motion for that.
Motion.
Second. Second. We just had to talk about time discussion. Five or six. Sound like better.
I can add a comment in the meeting because the board.
Oh, that's right.
I have a prior commitment.
You want to?
This is a joint deal for two C bases. If I can make a prediction, I think I'm just have Marcy pull the board like you always do. Because I can't make it tomorrow. I can't make it for the rest of the week. So. We have a meeting scheduled on the thirty first, so. I'll be at the thirty first.
You can do that.
I'll be at five P M. on the thirty first, prior to six P M. Hang in.
This time.
Okay.
Okay. My issue is that the people who've been present tonight have something about when their availability was and you said tomorrow, and I say, I say. So I don't want, I can check with them tomorrow. But, oh, the music's wrong, correct?
Okay.
So, as we take a vote, if we have a call on, we can do it tomorrow. If you don't have to be present for that. Marcy, you think you're present?
Yeah.
Generally, I do yes to reporting if it's audit committee meeting, so. I've been present at all in the past. At all of them.
I don't know if you have to be or not.
Production.
You can be your own.
Yes.
And so. Either.
If it's a joint dinner, we make one.
Do you think it was, do you think you, do they think you only met, that's why you just came?
No, I mean, there's other things why I'd rather get this done sooner than later. So. Okay, so I'm gonna find out if the court needs to be present. And then. You can call. Well, I'm just, I'm just gonna call executive session if I can have this discussion. Okay.
Item 3.1, personnel items for action. Consent agenda. Recommended the board as patient approve personnel items. The motion.
Second.
Discussion. Actually, can we do also, yeah, 5.3 and 5.4? The finance items for action. Motion for all three.
Second.
Just, just go second for all of them. Okay. Gene?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
I.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Aye.
Okay, called that to that. We're gonna move on to students who are here or who are left.
So, uh, student who want to recognize tonight, you know, Mr. Daley, Coach Daley, I guess you would say. Recognize one of our student athletes who's a wrestler, also worked in the career center quite a bit, has been involved in all sorts of good things that go on in the school district, so. On behalf of the board and myself, we want to congratulate Bobby on being recognized for being the sportsman for section four division two wrestling out of all of the student athletes. He received the sportsmanship award, certainly. He also attended states and finished seventh out of the entire state in his weight class, so kudos to him for an incredible career that he's had here with us, and we know that when he leaves, he's just gonna do great things, so congratulations, Bobby.
Good job, Bobby. Bobby's trouble.
We were also gonna recognize our, our drone soccer team tonight. They work here, obviously, they probably have practice to get to or a game or something, but, um, our drone soccer team is, this is the first year we've had it. And Coach Keith and Coach Bingley have been coaching the team throughout the year. Um, we just most recently won the state championship in drone soccer, which if you've never seen it, it's pretty, pretty neat to watch, and, um, certainly hopefully we can get them back to recognize them. I know that they're practicing and getting ready for nationals that are coming up within the next month. Six weeks, somewhere along there. So it just got changed. It was supposed to be at Virginia Tech, and now maybe it's gonna be in New York, uh, so we're really excited for their opportunity, and we'll definitely get to recognize them at some point here.
Item 3.1, motion approval of the minutes from February 2004.
Second.
Second.
Gene?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Item four, personal items for action. Consent agenda. Recommended the board as patient approve personnel items. The motion.
So move.
Second. Any discussion?
Gene?
I got him.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
5.1, budget transfer. Result from recognition of superintendent schools. If the budget transfer be approved, the motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Actually, can we do also, yeah, 5.3 and 5.4? The finance items for action. Motion for all three.
So move.
Second.
Just, just go second for all of them. Okay. Gene?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Whoops.
Aye.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
6.1, recommendation. Recommended that the recommendations of the CPSC, CSE, and the 504 team are hereby approved. The motion to that.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Gene?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Nora?
Aye.
John? Aye.
Presence report. I, I meant, I was hoping to do this. I don't want to do this often, but I apologize for our extended executive session. Um, I was reminded, oh, did Mr. Pass over here? Mr. Pass, okay, good, so you're here. Uh, I was remiss when, um, Dr. Murphy passed away, who was a very important person in my life, and so when I saw your email come up, um, it made me think of, actually, your father. So I, I just want to share a story about your father that had an impact with me, okay? So, um, so I was taking my third year of Spanish in high school right over here. I made it through probably the first 25 minutes of the class. Raised my hand, the teacher said, Joe, what are you gonna do? I said, I need to go down the guidance officer, I'm not doing this. I gotta read a book in Spanish, I have to write three reports in Spanish, I'm just, I'm not gonna do it. So I went down to see Tom Zayac, who's my guidance counselor. Tom Zayac said, Joe, you're gonna have to take physics, like it was the, you know, the most difficult class in the world. And he probably knew, obviously, your dad, I think everyone knew your father. So I was like, I don't care, I, I'm not taking Spanish, right? So what I felt was, I knew that, um, I didn't kind of portray myself as the best student when I was here, okay? I kind of coasted along. So when I arrived in your father's classroom, um, he, he instilled the confidence in me, and, um, he was tough, he was honest, hard, he had high expectations for me, even though I wasn't the best student on the numbers, right? But he forced me to work harder than in any other class that I had ever worked. And I did pass, and I did pass the regions, and I have a lot of respect for your father and what he did for me. So I want to share that because at times, when I was thinking about Dr. Murphy, I thanked him privately, but I never thanked him publicly, so I want to make sure your dad knows, and I wish the students were here so they could understand how important teachers are to everyone, and those teachers who touch you and make sure that you have a, have impacted you, I mean, that makes all the difference in the world. Your father was one of them for me.
So I'll be sure to relay that, feel that, I'll just make these, that's good, I do, yeah.
Work committee report, 8.1, first grades.
First grades are three policies. These are all required, but we don't have any, correct? Um, the first one. The first one... I think the first one is smoking and vaping. So, basically, this policy includes cannabis, it includes e-cigarettes, which our previous policy didn't necessarily include. The other one, which one, 1740? 1740 is relationship with non-public schools, so kids that either live in our district and go to a non-public school, or they are from another district and live and go to a non-public school in our district. You can read about that, giving them access to our extracurricular activities. That the yellow highlighted, that was what we currently do or what the recommendation is?
The recommendation is. Well, and we have to put a time, I think there's one we have to put a... I think it was highlighted, it's something we need to address to look at, update.
So, please look at the yellow highlighted policy. And then, community relations, again, that's accepting gifts and asking for grants. Basically, it gives, anybody that asks for a grant gets permission from the principal, I believe. Those are the first grades.
Yep, so, very cool. We have several presentations today, so I will just get through mostly my information that I might normally share because I will turn it over to, first on the list, I believe, is it Dr. Farrelly, you're gonna take us through budget update and also the Bosse's.
So, this is the first remain, that I have to present the Bosse's budget. Never built the Bosse's budget before, but they basically send a PowerPoint and they give it to you, the board, and then sometimes they come, sometimes they don't. So, I'm gonna do as quick and as fast as possible what their presentation is, but do understand that this is not something that I built, I didn't put this together, and I'm just relaying information to you from Bosse's. So, basically, this is the administrative and capital costs that are put in, that Bosse's puts together, and ends up in what's called the final request for services that you will approve as a board at the April 16th meeting, which you approve an overall number to pay on Bosse's for the year, but then there's all the services that are related to that. Inside those related services, there is a line for capital and a line for administrative costs. And this presentation will show you what those lines are. This is not a lot of money in terms of the budget overall, but they basically give you a sense of how they come up with the number. So, if we go to the next slide, go to the next slide, go to the next one, let's just go right to it. So, they have what's called an ARWADA cost methodology. This is the resident weighted average daily attendance. ARWADA is measured in every single school district. Average daily attendance is required to be reported by every school district through what's called an SA129 and an AT6 report to the state aid management system. Required every August to submit that. And then, your average daily attendance is the membership that you have within, inside your school district, basically enrollment, the maximum number of days that could be possibly attended, and then how many days were actually attended by that total membership. Gives you an average daily attendance. And they take that average daily attendance and then they weigh it based on everybody in the Rumen Taiga region. And then they take that weight and apply that weight to how much each district pays for their cost share of capital and administrative costs for Bosse's. Does that make sense to some level? So, that's what it is. So, if we go to the next slide, you can look at the 15 component school district of Rumen Taiga Bosse's. Uigo at Ligu is right there in the center. Our ARWADA number is 1996, as measured for next year. That is all kids that are in the district and out of district counted. And, but again, it's an average daily, is basically what they're saying, on average, you'd have that many kids. And then, our percentage of the whole share is 6.99%. So, 7% of the total share is what Uigo has to pay of the capital and administrative costs, right? So, obviously, Binghamton being the biggest. And then it goes down to the smallest one being South Mountain, which technically is Sussman Valley, right? It's the mountain district. So, go to the next slide, this is to the, does the work, go ahead. Here's your capital cost and what they're coming up with in terms of salaries, fringe benefits, supplies, materials and such. The increase for budget for them this year is, on the administrative side, is going up 6.2% and saying, basically saying the percentage increase for districts, this is 2.22. So, what does that mean for Uigo? Uigo's in the middle there, last year's administrative cost was 177.92. This year, they're 191.513, and net increase of 13.531. That 191.513 is the 7% of ARWADA, of the total administrative cost, okay? Go to the next slide. This is what it would cost us without aid. So, the administrative cost is 199.513 for Uigo, but we get 106.593, not this year, but next year in aid, and Bosse's expense driven aid. So, the net cost of the school district is 84,092. All right? Now, we get into leases, acquisitions, the dormitory authority payments. What dormitory authority is, is DASNE, Dormitory Authority of State in New York, is where your payments for capital go through. Sorry, I know, I do my best to do as best I can with this, but that's what that is. And I'll tell you about that in a minute. Keep going. Obviously, there's a capital project that they voted on two years ago, is successful. So, they're in the middle of that capital project now. This was the proposition, it did pass across the region, keep going. And it looks like their multi-year plan is, they've spent this much money so far in capital facilities master plan, and they'll begin to make bond, you know, they're beginning bond payments here in '26, '27, '28. Budget increase for capital is up 27%, almost $800,000. It looks like that's mostly on the facilities plan and capital project side. So, when you vote across the region, and everybody voted yet, I mean, it was approved across the region, what basically now Bosse's is able to do is this capital project, and they're increasing the cost in the capital side of the budget that gets now passed to the school district to pay through the final request for services. Go to the next slide. So, what's our share of that? You can see that last year was 202.598, now it's 271.294, up about $70,000. So, again, based on ARWADA, 6.299% of 7% of the total cost. Again, here's how they're paying that over time, or the difference over time, keep going. Now, I don't really know, I can't tell you a lot about this, right? This is the project itself. They are gonna be doing work on the main campus, but they're also building different space for some of their CTE programs. But, they have a space issue up there, and they're going to be able to expand some of those spaces. And that's what the capital project is basically about. Again, I can't give you the details on that, that'll be someone. If you wanna know more about that, we can invite someone down to talk about the specifics of that capital project. But, there's gonna be work at Glenwood, keep going. Looks like they got some HVAC work to do. This, it looks like for their hero program, this is where they're gonna expand with the building. Keep going. This looks like dirt. Keep going. And, as far as progress goes, you can see that it looks like they're in the design, they're in the actual construction phase of the trade center, and then they're working themselves along down the step approach into the education center. The education center itself is where they really need to do some decent renovations around some of the areas around special education. So, again, two components of the budget, administrative and capital, and you have our share of it. Go ahead, this is the total overall cost, $462,000 that Uigo share of the total capital and administrative costs for Bosse's. So, of the total cost you're gonna see in the revenue, the budget I'm about to show you, there's going to be about $462,000 of that as administrative and capital cost to Bosse's. And the net cost of that for us, when you minus out the aid, is 156,000. You do get aid on that portion of those costs. Any questions that I might not be able to answer for you? Anything else?
Yeah, most of that increase is related to the capital.
Yeah, it's mostly the capital, which is, they can't just do their own, they have to do across the region.
So, the three installments of like $800,000 are shared between the districts, and then it rolls into their $40 million project. That ended up being roughly what they're paying us.
So, now it brings us to the draft review of the budget. We had the budget workshop last Wednesday, in which board has a binder full of the budget in detail. This is basically the same thing presented to you tonight. As always, our goals are to maintain and add high-quality programs and services for students, control, reduce cost wherever possible. We always try to stay within the cap, we're always typically lower than what the cap is. This is always finding balance between the district's needs and what the community values. And then, future thinking in terms of budgeting challenges and short and long-term perspectives are always in consideration. This isn't here where state aid is actually doing, does quite well for us. Whether futures will be that, that'll probably be one of our biggest concerns moving forward. We have to consider that, whatever we do now obviously makes a difference for later. And then, manage the district resources effectively in order to support education programs for excellence. Go ahead. So, overall, at a glance, the total revenue for the budget this year is 59.769.964. And of course, expenses and revenue do match in a balanced budget, and that's a 3.27% increase overall. This year's budget is heavily supported by state aid as an increase. So, the increase to state aid, the state aid revenue this year is 33.283.306. That's a five and almost five and a half percent increase in state aid. That's a high percentage. You almost can typically think that you get around 2%. Every time we ever do projections, we stay around one and a half to 2% for conservative values in terms of state aid, but this budget is definitely supported by state aid. The property tax levy in this proposed budget is 18.619.730, or a 1.99% increase. And a minimal use of reserve funds, which is the workers' compensation reserve fund, that $40,000, and that is to pay tail claims. And we typically do that year to year out of that reserve, which is what it's used for. So, projected revenue, you can see the tax levy there is going up $363,000, a 1.9% increase. Other revenue, 3.36, that will have some different pieces that they'll show you in future slides. You can see that the largest increase in revenue is the $1.7 million in state aid, or 5.43%. No change to the appropriate fund balance, and we will not, at this point, propose doing any special projects or any specific projects for transfer to capital, as we did in the past. Last year, one was to support the ag building that you see out in support of the SAM's grant that we got from New York State, in order to complete that fund. That is now completed, that $400,000 is for, so we're not doing that this year. And then the appropriate reserve fund. As far, go ahead, as far as expenditures, these are the summary of expenditures. Salary is going up roughly $480,000 between the two. Equipment is, you can see a large percentage at 14%, but overall, $70,000, which is for maintenance side of the budget, operations side of the budget. And again, equipment costs are not large part of the budget overall, at about $1.5 million, but the percentage is a big percentage. Contractual expenses are relatively flat, $5,000 or increase. Material supplies, fairly flat, $15,000 or increase. Biggest drivers in the budget are Bosse's, 14 and that almost 15% increase at 1.2, which is mostly the full enrollment of CTE, now that we have everybody over, and specialized placements are the major drivers inside of the Bosse's increase, in addition to the administrative costs and capital's costs that we just saw in the previous presentation. So, that's where that increase is coming from. Debt service is down $651,000 from the fall off of the 20-year bonds with the original, or the middle school, which is now 20 years old, later on. So, that debt service is falling off, you will see a corresponding fall off of building aid with that. So, when we get into the state aid side, we're gonna see not only the debt service went down, but the building aid associated with that debt service also goes down. So, it's a fairly net neutral effect. The other large increase in budget is benefits, up 7%, $1.1 million. And then, transfer to capital is down $4,000, that's what I was telling you. They're not gonna do any special projects, so that's a lower, you know, number in terms of expenditures. So, you not only got the money out of the revenue side, you take the money out of the expense side as well. State aid. So, biggest increase in state aid is foundation aid at 8.35% increase. So, a $1.7 million increase in foundation aid, that's a large increase for us. I wouldn't count on that moving forward, but this year, foundation aid did quite well for us. Bosse's is up about a half million dollars, about 11%. Again, Bosse's are expense driven aids, you spend with Bosse's, you get aid back on Bosse's. And that's basically thinking about what services and what particular purchasing you wanna do through Bosse's so that you drive your expense driven aids related to that. Excess costs, high public costs are down about $78,000, that's related to special education. Everything else related to that is flat. Transportation aid is up about $300,000, or about 11%. Again, transportation is an expense driven aid. You spend on the moving parts of your transportation department, and you get back the associated aid based on your percentage. Your categorical aids after that are hardware, technology, textbook, library material, software. Those are all relatively flat at this point. They are dollar-for-dollar aid categories, so whatever you spend, you get exactly that amount money back from the state. We can always change those numbers around, so if we decide to put more money in textbook or hardware or software, they do allow that flexibility between the aid levels. Building aid is, like I said, would be down, this is, remember, the debt service was down on the expenditure side. This is the associated aid with the middle school is not coming there as well. So, as the debt service falls off, so does the building aid, and that's $629,000 decrease. And then, incarcerated youth is down about $20,000. Overall, aid, state aid is up, $1.7 million, or four, almost five and a half percent. Next slide. This latest local sources of revenue, the largest part of this is our payments in lieu of taxes for pilot, central New York own gas being the largest, 23.2, which we have talked extensively about. There is a slight, well, I would say, you know, $100,000 decrease in the pilot. That's by final piece coming off now, back onto the rolls. So, they're fully on the rolls next year, on the tax rolls, or on section one of the tax rolls. And, so that's that decrease. There is, I think you'll see that interest earnings is listed this year at 2.45, a fairly conservative number of revenue, that's, we'll see that large increase. Rental property, $240,000 is the maintenance facility. We'll be bringing that lease to you next, not the next meeting, but the April 16th meeting. Bosse's will be approving the lease, for the 10-year lease on that building. At the April 9th meeting, so I'll be, we'll be bringing that to you April 16th. That revenue line should climb itself, based on that lease, as we sign it, it's gonna climb to 3.60, it's gonna climb to 4.50, and it's gonna climb all the way up to 5.50 over the course of three years. And then, from there on out, it'll be a $550,000 revenue line for the school. And then from there on out, it'll be a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue line for the school district. In that line right there, miscellaneous resources of revenue. As far as BOCs summer enrichment reimbursement, that is related to our enrichment programs, mainly our summer, which is an expense-driven aid, and we get money back from BOCs aid on that, on those programs. And then, other than that, everything seems to be fairly flat. Overall, you see about a three point three six percent increase or two hundred thousand dollar increase miscellaneous side. Next one?
Just for clarification, when we passed the building project, I think they're three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but because the interest rates came out so low, we're not going to have to, that's going to reduce that. So the lease money is really going to go, you aren't going to need it.
You're not going to need it? That's a, that's a great point. Yes. The way that, in working with fiscal, when they do those estimates for those schedules, they do it at a fair, at a very conservative level. So they'll do like seven, eight percent interest rates. But when you go to actually bond, well, T-bills right now, bonds and level are right around four or six right now, I think is what they are. So whatever that bid comes out, say it comes out around four, six, four and a half, but rates, I, I just think, I think that's going to cut. But if they cut, those rates will come down, and so now you don't need that three sixty that was in that supporting schedule. And so therefore, that is full revenue provided to the general fund and can be used accordingly. That's correct. Any questions about that? That's an important factor to know, moving forward as far as budget. Property tax reserves and fund balance reserves, this is the property tax mainly, going up one nine nine or three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So as you can see between the three revenues, the largest percentage of revenue supporting the budget is state aid, right? Property taxes are, the, the increase of three sixty-three is a smaller percentage of the increase of the budget, at least to support the increase. Okay? Like I said, we keep, we're keeping property tax level levy below the allowable cap. I'll show you the cap here in a couple of slides. Important thing that I'll remind the board, the public, is that the federal dollars are done, right? We, as a school district, actually expended them fairly quickly and got through them as fast as possible in order to not be supported, to, to have a false sense of support on them. And so we've really been off of those now for a couple of years, but they are fully expended. So you no longer, those monies are no longer available. And that state aid is the largest increase at four, five point four three percent. That's really the revenue driver this year. Reductions, seven teaching positions through attrition. No significant impact our programs anticipated. So of those positions through attrition, we do not anticipate impacts to programs, large, significant impacts. They're clearly, as we move and get things staffed the way we need to, we're going to be able to maintain what we have. That's generally what that is. Class sizes remain in a viable range compared to the region. So we're averaging somewhere from twenty-one, twenty-eighteen, highest being twenty-three. Significant increases, benefits obviously being the big one, one point one two five. Salary's on average is two point seven between the two units. And BOCs with a fifteen percent increase, that's the largest increase in budget. Enrollment projections, this is a fifteen-year, our fifteen-year historical record of enrollments. You can see that we're going, we're projecting, we're going to be at the lowest we've been in fifteen years, by eighteen fifty-nine. These are kids in our school district, right, not out of district placements. So make sure that, you know, you get, you'll see a number that BOCs is putting up and then a number that we're putting up. You want to use this number because this is how you staff, right? Everything else is going outside of this. We don't have control over that staffing, right? If they were to come back in, obviously, we would have to worry about the staffing relationships with that. But that is a, a reality in terms of the trend that is going on. Go to the next slide. The largest decrease you'll see here is Apple Lake Elementary. This is a school that now is, from over a fifteen-year period on average, is down about twenty percent in terms of attendance. The other buildings are down roughly eight to ten percent based on the building. But that's where we're seeing a pretty good reduction to the Apple Lake Elementary. The tax cap, this is the formula this year. Your, the, the district is allowed under the law to go out as high as four point zero two percent. This budget is proposed at one nine, nine, all right? So what's driving this cap higher is the growth-based, the tax-based growth factor, which is any brick and mortar that has increased, that has increased the value of the tax assessment across the school district. So something was built, what it is, I don't know what that is, that drives that number, but there is some brick and mortar that drove that number. The pilots receivable of last, of last year, and then you take any, or, or any money for capital levies, so that's what we pay in terms of leases and bond payments. The allowable growth factor of two percent, that is the actual two percent cap in the middle of the formula. CPI is above that right now, but you can't go any higher than two. Then you take pilot receivables for this year out. And allowable carryover is the money from last year that we decided not to tax the public in terms of what was allowed to be taxed, carries over to this year's formula. And that now produces a limit, a levy of eighteen nine nine one as a possibility. That's as high as the levy can go under the tax gap. Any questions on that? This is budget and property tax history over time. The average tenure average is about one point two five. You can see our last five years was zero, 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 one nine nine, one nine nine. But on average over a tenure period, that's where we kind of set. So including budget, maintain career programs, by the class size at elementary levels, we'll continue with our CTE programs. Of course, we'll continue our enrichment programs. They're very popular with the community. And we continue to implement our career pathways and service learning opportunities. Obviously, that's a big part of our school district and the mission and vision, and we will continue down that road. And, next slide. Budget timeline. So we had our budget workshop last Wednesday. We had this draft tonight. The final budget approval will be on the sixteenth. There is that gap of time if the budget, if the board needs or feels it needs additional time to schedule any other workshops or any other time, we can certainly do that. We'll have our first informational session, Apple Lake Elementary on the first. The official budget hearing will be before the board meeting on the fifth, and then the annual vote is on the Friday. Any questions on the budget?
Just, I know that our, last meeting was on last Wednesday, but we talked about the long-range projection from Cynthia.
Have a chance, please.
Yes, so Mr. Hallenbeck, who's been waiting patiently.
Yeah, thank you.
He's going to give us a winter athletics report, and we already, we've already started, this is week two of the spring. So we're, we'll, they kind of end and then start immediately when we have several teams that are, you know, competing in sectionals and states and all that.
Yeah, first scrimmage tonight for girls with drops, and games start Wednesday, so.
Yeah, I heard a glitch with the poor ducts. Pick it up, or they are.
Yeah, try it, so most.
All right, you can, you can just go right there. So, and Bob just alluded to it as, as well, I just wanted to touch on this, just to give numbers and see what we've been doing and planning, but this is the big, it's very popular in the community, the enrichment. So you can see fall two thousand twenty-four, we have fifty-one programs in our, all of our schools, operating, giving kids opportunities in many different facets. This spring, currently, there are thirty-one programs going, and Mrs. Luke and I are also currently planning out the summer. Which, you know, is very popular, the summer enrichment programs for all of our things. You see our Hawksnest camp, which is our elementary program, this year new, which is actually very exciting. It's going to be a pre-k kindergarten for about three weeks. It's going to be like a prep. And the kindergarten preschool teachers are going to be prepping our kids coming into school. We have our seventh and twelve camps, music, athletics, arts. Again, proposals are coming in for that now, and it's always a huge success, but a great opportunity for our kids to be on campus all summer. And obviously, the fall and spring programs allow for many opportunities all year long. You can see our after-school program, current numbers, OES, two hundred and twenty-five kids utilize that program. AES, two hundred and twenty-three, so pretty even. And then our boys and girls club, currently sixty-eight students. So again, opportunities after school, good for the community, and getting our kids chances to be on campus and involved. Go ahead, Mars. I always just show this one with any athletics update. This is our athletics mentality. Head coaches get this. We start every meeting with this. And again, I'm not going to read through all of it. You've heard before. The big push this year from all of the coaches meetings is that third line down, and it's about creating an environment people want to be part of. Really stressing that with our coaches and making sure that they are working on that. And what is the environment they're creating for the kids, practice daily, planning, what's your program mean to them and for you guys? So that's just been a big push. Just a quick review again, just so you can see the numbers. I went back to the fall teams. Four hundred and thirty-four fall athletes, all of our teams or individuals qualified for sectional play. You can see the different championships. Boy soccer for division, volleyball division, cross-country division. Stat champions in boy soccer, volleyball, sectional champions, boy soccer, volleyball, girls cross-country, regional champions, volleyball. Individual, cross-country, Jalen and Jevon Belker, both your section four champions. And Kalen Kachuk, who just signed to go to Boston University, a very impressive, fifth in a row diving sectional champion. And that is sectional, issue and history for that. So pretty impressive from the fall. Go ahead, Mars. That continued into the, the winter for us. You can see participation. Sometimes people look at that and they say, oh, the number's a little smaller. There are less programs, and typically, your winter rosters are all, they're smaller teams. Basketball doesn't have as many as a football. So numbers dropped a little bit, but the teams were still very full. We filled rosters at every level, which not everyone can do right now across our region. Again, all teams qualified for sectional play, and we had many individuals also compete in sectionals. You can see again the list here, boys bowling, sectional champs, stat champion in wrestling for Callan Manell. Section four champion in swimming, Eric Trader, the five hundred, section four champion, McGab Allen, two hundred individual medley, and a hundred back. You saw Bobby Struble here tonight, probably one of our strong points of our winter programs, again, for the last thing that's up there. Seventh in the state, but the section four wrestling sportsmanship award, super proud of that, is he was, that was chosen by all of the coaches in the area. And he walked out the section four kids at the state tournament, carrying that section four flag. So he got to represent us. Huge accomplishment for our school and for him. I always like to throw this up, because just as important, if not more important, is they are scholar athletes. These are the averages of all of our teams that competed in the fall, and you can see our winter GPAs. Our overall GPA for the fall was a ninety-five point zero three for all teams. Our winter overall GPA, again scholar athletes, of a ninety-three point seven three. So our students are obviously competing not only in athletics, but you can see very impressive what they're doing as well in the classroom. And that trend is something that has continued over the years, and we continue to push, trying to become a school of distinction to make sure every team qualifies for that New York State scholar athlete. A, a push for me this year with some of our committees, and you can see, we've really tried to develop leadership amongst our athletes and giving them some opportunities. We do have a student leadership, a girl's leadership, for Mrs. Evans and Mrs. Manning are running that. And they had the opportunity this year, really cool, Emily Mackay, who is an Olympian, who runs, she ran at PU, but PU had a women's and sports day, and these girls got to attend the luncheon and listen to her speak. They had a fantastic experience. They said it was, you know, just an amazing opportunity to get to hear what she's accomplished and what she does now as an athlete that they hope to be someday. Section four holds a student advisory committee. Again, you can see, we have a group of students. That was about two weeks ago. And they spent the day with all the other section four schools. There was two presentations around performance and mental health. And then they did different leadership challenges and worked together with all the other section four schools. Madison McAvoy was one of our leaders from our school, who coordinated that and run that. So again, we send coaches and our athletes to do these things within the section and be something we hopefully continue to do. Big one for me this year is also, you guys always hear the, the PLC and us collaborating and working together. I'm trying to drive this also within our coaches. So we do a lot of coaches collaborations. One of the things I have kind of pushed is that they're always improving and learning. And we, as a district, so thank you to the board and the administrators here who help support them going and continue to learn. We have staff attending conferences. So you can see the list of where some of our staff have gone and we have, are coming. The picture on the side there, that's our staff. I've asked that when they go to these things, they don't just get to go to them. They then come back and they put together presentations and they're sharing them. We're having head coaches meetings and collaborating, so they're bringing things back that other programs can all use. Even if it's just a practice plan or some type of information that they can use. So that, our boy soccer went to the national conference. This is our soccer staff. They're presenting to coaches. Football just got back from the state conference, and I know I've worked with Coach Taylor. He's putting something together to bring back to the coaches. Really cool opportunity for our boys across. Coach Evans has created a partnership with Cornell University's coach. And that group got to go up, at the time, Cornell was number three in the country. And they got to spend time watching them practice, and then their coach came over and did like a meet and greet in time with our players to ask questions. And he's already told me this spring, there's an energy from that of what those kids saw, and it's transferring into what they're doing in their practice. So cool. And our tennis staff is attending a, a conference at the, Bangwith Tennis Center coming up. So again, continuing to grow, continuing to challenge themselves, and then bring it back so that our students are, you know, benefiting from these opportunities that they're doing. That was quick. Well, just to highlight, a lot of good stuff going on. As Dr. Green said, we are moving into spring, and it is underway. Scrimmage has started this week. First games start this week. It's a very busy schedule, but the same success is the expectation. We have created that. And again, I always challenge those coaches, we, we are very lucky here that we have a lot of athletes that do free sports. So they have success in the fall. I tell those winter coaches, they're the same kids, they're hungry, they're coming for you. Say the same thing to the sprint coaches, say a lot of the same kids, they're hungry to continue the success that they had. I want to see that still. So the final thing I put up here is just, it's, it's always has to be recognized for, for you guys, our administrative team, transportation, buildings and grounds, the coaches, the athletes, the parents community, it, it doesn't happen alone. And we really have a good thing going with support, so I thank you for that. I thank the administrative team for the, you know, the efforts they give, and again, the buildings and grounds. These guys have been out here, Mike, I know he's not here now, but we've been really collaborating and functioning to make sure everything is set, everything is ready. They're doing extra work on the fields right now and prepping for the season. So, and again, transportation gets everybody where they got to be, always making it happen. So a lot of shout-outs to those guys because they really make sure our kids get the opportunities and have the chances they do. So any questions? So, any questions? I'm looking forward to another really good spring and continuing to move through.
Also, just quickly, I wanna recognize Ryan, who was one of the presenters at the Athletic Association Conference. And I received a couple of text messages from ADs who were there that said he did a great job of sharing some of the great things that our coaches and student athletes are doing. So, thanks for modeling that, and appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I'll be super long, but, Manny, you are. You need to, ever sent anybody to the ISAC, participate in ISAC team?
We did not. So I sent out to the families, however, that's a good question. We will, so I talked to Windsor about that, and I have had a family reach out already for next year. So we will revisit that again in terms of that merger. I do have a mom who, her son plays and is looking to play out next year.
The other thing you mentioned, a trip signing to Boston College like that.
Yep.
I swear, it was in previous years, it may have been other schools locally. Is there a reason that we don't have that more broadcasts, full signings and stuff like that on our?
Yeah, so we put out, we put out to all the community, and we put it out to all the local news, we do a press release that goes out. So who shows up, shows up for that? So we do division one signings like that, like the NIL as an individual. And then every May, so right now I have a list, we have fifteen currently, which is amazing. We have fifteen seniors who will be going on to play at the next level, whatever that is, Juco, Division three, Division two. We will have a signing day for them, and there'll be a whole group, they'll get a letter from my office, the whole group will be there, we'll put out a press release to the news, and they will all sign going on to play at the next level. Yep, so that happens everywhere.
How are the tennis, you're all doing the fall, or academic, you're Dr. nine or less? I have to look up my girls.
Eighty-nine point like four, yeah, something like, I don't remember the exact number, they just missed it by the ninety percent. Yep.
They have really small numbers?
Yeah, I know.
It is, it's an interesting one, to qualify, seventy-five percent of your roster, and their roster was a little bit smaller this year, so it just, they just missed it. Fair question. Anything else?
Joan, do you get the information when he puts it out, student athletes, like special situations, is there any of that?
Not specifically.
Okay.
No.
Well, can we just make sure that she's included on?
Luke had you to the.
I usually go through Mr. McAvoy to put press releases.
Yeah, all right.
Yep.
You can do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, moving right along, we have Mrs. Castorline, who is going to give us a quarter to update academics and goals. We are obviously into quarter three right now. She's gonna give you an update very similar to what you saw at the end of quarter one.
So I put, I put together a slideshow, but then I saw my list, my name with a lot of others, so I shortened my slides down, but I put the information in my notes area here so that therefore you could follow along and see and look at that as we go through. You can look at specific notable things, because I originally had a, it was quite lengthy, it was just like, I was like, yeah, let's paint it up. So I just wanted to share with you overall, my, you know, getting up here and sharing this with you all is to try to provide you data on our district goals and sort of checkpoints throughout the year on how we're doing with that. Some of the goals are new, so we are working with different communities of teachers to kind of figure out what that's gonna look like. So when we do record, you can kind of, you know, see that growth over time. But that's really what this is about, is those checkpoints, and then providing, for secondary, providing, you know, quarterly updates, would just in general create the management. So, elementary, the new district, the new goals were with the achievement for second grade, ensuring all students are at grade level and literacy number cents by the end of second grade. So, I have a team, we have a team of teachers that are kind of looking into what would that be, and how would we screen that, how, what are some of the assessments that we would use to be able to show that our students are there by the end of second grade? So that is a work in progress, we're working on that. And trying to utilize screeners, re-screeners that we can use to help complete some of those foundational skills in math. And then also, little update, we have our curriculum review committee. We have the legislation off to the side that if you are associated with the district, you know that your, your teams are working on their alignment to the big six competencies for science and reading. And so we have a team of teachers at every grade level is represented, and we were reviewing our own curriculum as well as reviewing, I think we're up to five different programs. We're really trying to be mindful and really scrutinize all of those particular programs to see what best fits us here at Olego. So just a little update on that. And then we also have a lot of teachers taking advantage of professional development around UFLY, which is explicit phonics, but also highlighted with Mrs. Barnes, is we have a lot of teachers taking it on some of the PD, on building key in classrooms and doing that turnkey and bringing it back to our teachers, and, and Mrs. Barnes is being one of those, you know, showing you that in action. So we have that starting to take hold actually, and more and more teachers are wanting to take PD with some of the teachers who are doing that. So it's really fun to see that happen. So this is what I did, I consolidated all of our, so went to our data, the dashboard, which building, elementary building leaders and I have been working on, and with the teachers to kind of really take the data that teachers are collecting and make it visible, so we can start to see how our students are growing and where we may need to focus on. And so I highlighted in here, so in your notes, all of notable things that were going along in here that is important that you, you see right now kindergarten, the big thing there was, they haven't done their benchmark until this January, and seventy percent of our students are on or above reading level as kindergartners. This was their first benchmark, and they've been utilizing our screener to build some of those foundational skills, or at least track them. And when you look at the teachers with their letter IDs and sounds, we have seventy-one percent have their fifty-two letters, and fifty-eight percent are already at their twenty-six sounds that they need for at the end of kindergarten year. So halfway through the school year, they're, they're making some great progress. First grade, I highlighted there, it looks like for first grade, you know, with their reading, there was a dip, but if you look at what the dashboard I went through, and eighty-three percent of our kids are growing. So it may not have been what, you know, it looks like there's a decrease, but not really, because they're all growing, but they're all growing in their different ways. And, and the teachers are upping the benchmarks as they move along. So, you know, new benchmark and trying to grow those readers and push them, but they are all, eighty-three percent are. So you can go through and look at the other data on there, you don't have, I have to kind of go through. Second grade was amazing, absolute, they had the greatest growth. I had to check my math a little bit, but it was a huge growth in their readers, the second, second quarter. And, and so that was huge, they really are getting their readers to that. And I actually put in there in the notes, so you can see, what is the goal for their reading level, where they trying to get to with those grades, that kids begin to be grade level, where they trying to get to? So I was trying to provide all of that. But just a summary of that with the data in there for you, so you can kind of look at that without me going through it all. Math, this was really fun to go through. It's amazing, so at the very end, see where it's in highlighting green, at the very end, I wanted to share with you, all of the teachers pre-k through five have identified essential math standards. And so you can kind of see, you can see what they believe, you know, are the most essential and that they're working on as a team to collaborate around these essentials. And it was really interesting to see how each team was tracking those on the dashboard and showing the, their growth with their students. And so I shared with you some of that work that they're highlighting at this time, because that was pretty dynamic, there's a lot going on in math, so I didn't wanna put a ton of things in there, but I at least wanted to share with you their essentials, but also what they're working on right now. And, and that, you know, that work, and within that dashboard, they're just constantly showing their, their growth with their students. So I did share that there. And then, secondary, this is, so we're still, it was with our elementary, we have our dashboard, and teachers have been really working hard over the past two years to really kind of utilize that and figure out what works best for them and their team, and then take advantage of, okay, these are our essentials, how was that gonna look on there? So they've been really working and doing that. And for me, it was easy for me to go in and pull out and get that data to share with you. Work in progress in the secondary. So we are highlighting with some middle school team, I'm working with Sean and Carol Lynn, and we're gonna be working on Mastery Connect, which is a program similar to, what is it, Viatrina? Where you essentially build assessments around your essentials, and you can track those over time. And that's what teachers have been working on this year, is really honing in on what, and so in campus, you might hear teachers talk about outcomes, they're the same thing as what I'm speaking here with their priorities. And to identify those so that we can start to build assessments around them within this program, and we can start to track data on our students, so that we have that transparency, we have that data, so that we can start collaborating around our students more, and being able to see where we need to put some of our resources. Right now, it is still kind of difficult to get that. And so some of the other highlights that we have is math curriculum, so really working on the middle school, getting the math team together. They're really excited to get together as a team and be able to look at their curriculum and actually align, make sure they're aligned, six to eight. Science doing the same thing, we have new science standards, but we had our new tests this past year for fifth and eighth, they're brand new assessments. And taking a look at those and really looking at that and as a team, and really looking at the science skills and aligning those six to eight, so they're really starting to work on that. And then reporting that quarterly. So I shared with you quarterly data, but the goal is to have those teams of teachers create those common assessments so that students can show what they know, and they can collaborate around that, they can see where their students are at, and maybe decide where, what students might need some intervention, some help. And so we're working on that still. So that's the data that you have in front of you for the next few slides. And so you can kind of see just where the different teams are at. They change, it's become, it was difficult to kind of get these together because things do fluctuate, so you have put ELA, social studies, things fluctuate because they're a new focus and different things that they're testing. Quarter one isn't necessarily the same as quarter two, so you're really seeing just different skills being assessed, but where they're at with that in that particular content area. You can keep moving through to the math and, there's math. Oh, I did an extra, I forgot to write it in, I'm sorry. So then I have the math and science there, and then the world language that you can look at and kind of see. The world language, they've been really working hard, it's really a brand new team of teachers, and they've been really working together to build blueprints, to work together to build assessments, and they, you know, this may look like it's kind of all over the place, but they are really, really, really worth working hard. And, and so, I foresee this to change over time for the better, just because they, they are trying to work really hard together for their, for their students. I just wanted to share with you that we're still using our screener to really to help, you know, identify our, our students who may need intervention, and also to show growth. And that's the other intention of the, of the screener. We now have it K through nine, ninth, which had their first, I don't know, let's say, they first, they first in in January, their first time doing this. The kids themselves have done it before, but the teachers, and utilizing that data and seeing what it can show them, so that is new to them in the ninth grade. And so we're still, that's a work in progress, we're just trying to, now that they have data, now what we, what can we do about it? And then I just shared with you some of the growth in our NWEA math, overall as a district. I know Stacy is probably going to hone in on some of that with LFE, OES level, but you can kind of see that as well. And then at the very end, I have absenteeism, can't help sicknesses, but, you know, and this was as of March nineteenth, this is where we were. Our average rate of attendance, still pretty high, but our chronic absenteeism went up a little bit in this year, as we continued through the year, and as of March nineteenth, it did climb. And so you'll see Stacy and Carrie share with you some of their ways that they are creatively trying to, I'll show you. Now tap that, maybe our kids here. And so like I said, the last page is those math essentials, you can take a look at those. And that's all, so, thank you. If you have any questions, I'm. But we're just constantly trying to work on all of this, and like I said, work in progress, because as we are trying to track and trying to figure out ways in the secondary to pull that data so we can actually share it, and not wait for region six exams to show where our kids are at. Quarterlies are really supposed to act like that little dipstick of what, how our kids are progressing throughout the year. So we have to ensure that, make sure that that is on track, and that's what the DAX is helping us with, we have to work on that.
So Heather, this is the first year of NWA for the ninth grade?
Yeah.
The plan is to, the plan is for next year for, it to roll up to tenth, and then the following year, eleven, so.
Yes, so that we can have that outside of Olego bubble, how our kids are, you know, comparing to other students across the country, so we can see how our students are, and also see their growth. And I think that, that is our, our goal, is to be able to provide that all the way up to.
Do you have any speculation on the uptick in COVID-19?
I don't really have, I, I think there's a lot of illness. I just know for a lot of stomach bugs, a lot of, just a lot of that going on. I think that was probably, if we dove into it, was probably one of the big, because I recall since.
When was the?
When the last one, last one was November, it was going down into November, but then it December and January, March, and it was just.
Some of the hospitals.
It was, yeah, and then, yeah. Diverting, for people from certain house to hospitals because of the flu.
But there's the nice part about the system that we use now, working with everyday labs, such communications path, that we'll go into families, remind them, and certainly, you know, they have the delineate, trying to be sick and making sure that they're, you know, in school with good attendance as well, so. It's a really pretty powerful tool.
I think it was the time of the year that.
Yeah.
It always represents that time, and I think the second mark on period is always a challenge because of that. Where typically we see a lot of those changes, maybe not for the better because of, because of that.
Excellent. Okay, so now we have the OES building spotlight, and it seems, it seems like that happened a long time ago, but that was just a few hours ago. One of the things I'm gonna say before they get started in looking at the data, but just how impressed I was to like to see the kids interact in the Vicky classrooms, and, you know, their, their reading and writing, and really thought represented. Quick story, I was in a kindergarten classroom this morning, they were sharing what they, you know, had done over the weekend, and everybody gets their chance to share. One little girl says that, I have forty chicks at home, and we got, and we got twenty, twenty more new ones. A young man across the side of the room says, oh, well, that's sixty. I went, wow, he's a kindergarten, and thank you. He was on it, so it was, something's going on with, that's, that's working, so. Who goes to you guys?
Well, thank you, we'll just go right to the next slide. We have a little slide by numbers here, so just to give you enrollment numbers, and this was as of when I started when I created the slide, but forty-seven through the San Diego K, sixty-three K, sixty-eight one, and then we're in the seventies for. and one, and then we're in the seventies for the rest of the groups. Our chorus and music that you got to see today is very healthy at school. If you look at like the fourth grade band number, 67 students in band, only have 78, 78 students total, so it's pretty, it's pretty impressive.
And in enrichment, you kind of heard Ryan touch on it, we do have 225 students registered at OES currently and in that time, we've got teachers staying after with groups of students. They're doing anything from Zumba to STEAM topics, board games, crochet is happening, Legos, cooperative games, art projects. And also one of the big things that's happened this year is students that enroll in after school. One of our special ed teachers has been doing pre-case centers and working after school with them pretty much every day, you know, letters and numbers and just working on cooperative games and even talking and playing with each other. So that's been a big thing for our after school program this year. And then we have our clubs listed that have happened and it's nice, the, this year, the yearbook advisors have taken a group of fifth graders and the fifth graders are really building the OES yearbook this year, which is going to be nice to see because they're really taking a lot of ownership in it, going to events around school, taking pictures, getting them ready to upload, which has been really good. So these are our OES slash district goals. We have a couple of goals that are in addition to this, but this is what we're sharing out today. So foundational skills, which Heather talked about, literacy and numbers sense by the end of second grade, we really want everybody on level. Lots of research to support that. New York State assessments, we want to exceed the state average in proficiency. Good to see how we did shortly. And then attendance, we do chronic absenteeism. I told you this year, we've heard a lot about pneumonia, which is, so a lot of respiratory things this year. So we looked at our NWA achievement from last year in the winter to this year in the winter and we have seen some good growth. If you compare the two, in that red section, the lowest percentile, which is considered the most at risk. In math, we dropped four percent in our lowest percentile, but we improved by eight percent in the green and blue, which are, we consider our most proficient profile or percentages when compared with their risk scores and like how they compare nationally to other students. So that was good to see. And then ELA, you know, as Heather pointed out, we are looking at different curriculums and incorporating more of the science reading, but even as we're still using the programs we have and supplementing with the phonics, we've seen drop by one percentage point in that lowest percentage and we had an uptick of six percent in the proficient percentiles from last year at this time to this year at this time, which we think is really promising. And we also have been utilizing iXL and taking and I upload everyone's results into iXL and then it creates skill plans based on their scores with what they need to work on to show improvement and growth for the next, the next screening period. Okay, so we talked about earlier, one of our district goals is really to have everybody on level with literacy and numbers sense, so early literacy skills are super important. I think that's something we really began focusing, I mean, we've always focused on it, but even more so last year, we put a lot of emphasis on phonological awareness, which is hearing the sound. So you see even as early as pre-case, they're doing rhyming, like go and no, does it rhyme? Go and grapes, does it rhyme? And you know, so lots of funny phonological awareness activities, part pre-KK one. And then phonics, you heard Heather talk about, Ufly, many of our teachers have piloted Ufly and I think the really direct instruction, they're finding a lot of success with today when we were in the kindergarten class, there was a little girl that was stuck on a word before she said the wrong word and then she realized she said pot instead of big. She realized she said the wrong word when she got to pot, she went back and said sound and pound because that's the language and she went. Big, big pot. And so just those skills, instead of them looking at the teacher with I need help eyes, they're, they're getting in there and doing the work themselves. So this was the, how we get, how we get there, I guess. Really can they take those skills they're learning and apply them because that's the most important part? Can they do it in reading and writing? Write in isolation, but it has to be in text. So this is in text from last year. The blue is last year's data and the yellow is this year's data. So you can see we have more proficient students and less students who are working towards mastery, which is, which is what we want. We're on the right, we're on the right track. These are our New York State assessment data, so you do know one of our goals was to be above the state. We were not there in ELA last year, lots of reasons it could be, but I think we're focused, I mean, I know we're focused on the right areas now. OES is the orange bar and district is yellow and then the state is blue and you'll see the same for math. So we're not there yet, but we will be, we are that, we're doing well in math, we're above the state in every grade level, so we're going to continue working in both areas to just continuing to be the best that we can be. In terms of attendance, you can see this is our attendance rates from, well, now two years ago to this year. And this is not, this is like who is here right now.
Right, yeah.
But you can see that our attendance is improving. We have taken a lot of effort with our student support team and just Stacy and I in general to do some initiatives to try and take those group of kids that are considered to be in that severe early chronic category. We've done things from having incentives when they do come to school, taking the time to make personal contact with families when we notice that there's an absence that's more than a couple of days long, calling them just to see is everything okay, what can we do to support you? You can track on Everyday Labs, it will kind of show you trends where you might have what they consider a dip day where attendance is typically low. So this year, like our half days when we have parent teacher conferences, we struggle with attendance. So we had a spirit day content since every half day was red and blue day and we would announce for the winner was what they grade level, with the most participation of having red and blue. And then Marcy, if you go to the next slide, every Monday morning, I go into Everyday Lab and look by grade level to see what the percentage was for the previous week. And I, that is in our front lobby right when you come in the front door and I update it with the percentage of how many were in there and highlight in some way which grade level was the most. And then we give each classroom in that grade level a sore badge with a little certificate saying your grade level had the highest level of percentage for the past week, congratulations. I will say fourth grade is on a three week winning streak right now, so we'll see next week if another grade level knocks them out of, knocks them out of first place.
Competitive.
It is competitive, yes. It is competitive. There's one little girl, she is, I think she's in second grade and she was very, very upset because one week, second grade didn't win and she goes, I am coming every day, I don't understand why people can't come to school.
You might have met her today.
You may, you may have met her today, let's see.
But she was like really like.
She might have picked on a girl.
She walks by to like go, go with a teacher on Monday mornings and every Monday, she was like watching as I'm writing to see, to see if second grade was going to win.
So I just, we wanted to put a slide about culture and climate survey, so I met with a few teachers and our SRO, trying to think of who was, who else was there. We looked at, Carrie, we looked at the culture and climate survey and kind of said, what sticks out to us at OES, like what is, what is probably the most pressing, you are the most important in our world? And the committee identified bullying and mental health as two of the big ones. And so to address bullying, we, we do have a character trait every single month, but I think there may need to be some teaching around bullying because not everything is bullying. There is unkind behavior, which might happen every now and then, and there is conflict and a lot of times, anything that was happening was bullying. So I think giving kids the language to say, that was not nice, was, has been powerful for our kids. We're like, ooh, I was in that fight too, that wasn't bullying. So that I think was, has been helpful. We did share that in the, when we were building newsletter too, there was a little kind of graph that showed the difference in behaviors. And then mental health, the other thing, and at OES right now, we are super fortunate, we go to the next slide, we have BU interns that work in our school right now. And so there's four BU interns in our building and they are, they spend lots and lots of hours with students and we identify them at our student support team meetings on Tuesdays and we discuss, does it need to be a small group, is it a check-in, is it number one? So they're getting lots of hours at our building with mental health, so we felt like that was addressed as well at OES. So what are we doing well? Our PLC grade level teams are working really hard together to support student achievement. I'm called frequently to different meetings to say, hey, can you tell us more about this? Or what do you think about this? So they're, they're very reflective and gaining traction and working with, working to support each other and the kids. Our school environment, students are supported both academically and socially to gain those skills they need. So again, we are recognizing students who display a character trait with this month with responsibility, next month with respect. So we're doing some teaching around those skills and raising them because in the end, we want them to be successful adults. Instructional coaching, we have two coaches in our building that are providing lots of support to staff and it's very data-driven, which is really nice. Coming with, with data, here's where we're at, we're going to do this particular teaching style and we're coming out with this data. So teachers really can see the impact of what's happening. And then as Heather was talking about, our data dashboard has been really, I think, very vital in seeing where our kids are at, where they need to be and how, how we're growing them. So that's been a really good piece, I think, to have it all in one place instead of scattered. We're out. I'm going to let you talk about sore.
Yeah.
So sore, we really have embraced in all aspects of our split. If you saw in the lobby, we have the kind bulletin board, we've got soaring about attendance, we've got soaring for positive behavior. Our CP door, the next slide, there's just some pictures on there. So a couple of things that we, we continue to soar awards this year where we recognize by month when the kids get a medal. It is a student-driven ceremony, so the fifth grade student council students are the ones that do most of it and run it, just kind of with our help. They have a whole little system of how they rotate to the different stations during the ceremony and help recognize the students that are getting the award for that month and they're nominated by their teachers. We also this year, Stacy had positive river hop notes made and so we, if you saw on the main hallway, we have a bulletin board and every Thursday, we read positive river hop notes that teachers submit to me and the kids come down and they get their certificate with what they were nominated for with a sore badge, they take their picture and then they randomly get put on this like bingo board of one to 25. And when we get a row of five, those kids are called down in the moment to get like a prize from our treasure chest or our prize boxes in our office. If anyone's listening at home, this Friday, we will fill the board for the second time. So we've had 50 positive river hop notes or positive referrals for either academic behaviors or just good behavior, showing good character. So, and that's only since we started that work at the end of October, so we've had teachers have nominated students, over 50 students, courtesy positive river hop notes. And so, and then every Thursday, the students that do the announcements read them to shout out the other students. So and then, I'm on page here, but I'm not. So you will see the next slide, Heather already really talked about the ELA curriculum, we're really looking for a curriculum that follows the science of reading research. We've added in some things for now to support us until we can get a program that's more cohesive. Continue using the curriculum, focusing on essential standards. So whatever, whatever curriculum we have, we have identified essential standards, it's really important that that's really what we're focused on because everything, education is very big, so we really need to drill down and then teaching it all, but teaching the most important things with real intent, laser focus. Continue to work with and support teachers as they identify student needs and provide feedback to maintain growth, building positive relationships with their school community and then continuing to grow in all our buildings, district goals. So you know, we still have work to do and we are, we're in our space and doing that work.
Quick question, I thought I was interrupting. Can you move back that slide to, do?
Yeah, the other right far.
Oh, no, sorry, just the one.
Oh, just that.
It's like her.
No, keep going.
Oh, wait, one more.
One more.
One more.
One more.
I can't.
This is forward, now we're going back forward.
You want the reading?
Are we truly selecting the curriculum, is there a system that we're developing?
We are going to select.
Oh, yeah.
So yes, we have, actually tomorrow is another branch, I guess, another session of our curriculum review committee. We have teachers from K to six represented and we are reviewing, so we've done a lot of digging in and reading out what we didn't want because it didn't follow, didn't have all the pieces and we're like, we're not going to try to mismatch, like that's kind of what we're doing now. We have pieces that follow, but we have pieces that don't, so we're supplementing. We're really looking for the unicorn of the program. We really want to find just the right thing. So we have two meetings tomorrow and this is the whole curriculum committee, the K6 committee and coaches who are meeting. We have a presentation from two different companies that will run us through what a day in that curriculum looked like. So yes, yes. And so we'll skip past this one because we've kind of talked about that. And these are just upcoming events in our school or, or not at our school, some field trips, but we wanted to share them with you. I don't want to be at one of our sore award ceremonies, they are fun, thanks start at 1:15 and it's always the last Wednesday of the month at 1:15. And they are live from 10:00 to 2:00 PM, so watch the, pull them up and watch them. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Number 10, district business, emergency capital project bus lift resolution. You in motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Jean, how's that, is that needed with capital project?
We're going to drive for transportation, just because it's a higher, higher rate. That's the goal, and then that now, we'll try to go to capital. So this is, we have a bus lift that has faulted and, you know, we plan to use some pump downs to replace that. Timeline to get that will be tricky like everything is right now in terms of ordering, delivering, installing. We will use state contract for this, so we'll have some options we didn't have. That's really, I mean, it's tough for us to go, to lose a bus lift with all the requirements from DOT and all that that we have to keep up with. Any questions?
Jean? Linda? Jessica? Mike? Joe? Nora? John?
Okay, 10.2, capital project audit. There's two in here in terms of the verbiage. It's one that we're supposed to go in in terms of the.
I think it's the same.
Seems like the same.
Yeah. They're just copies, ones, yeah. The other thing we need to, is a dollar amount that we see.
So I need a motion to approve, I think before, at the previous meeting, 20,000 was put out there as a total for that audit. I need a motion for that. Need a motion for 20,000 for the audit?
I think it was up to 20,000.
Up to.
And that was, you were going to find out the cost to bring that back to. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Okay, 10.3, found recommendation superintendent schools to prove the annual meeting budget vote in the notice. Okay, 10.3, found recommendation superintendent schools to prove the annual meeting budget vote in the notice. Motion.
So moved.
Second. Second, discussion.
Now, that's actually is technically 10.4, but it has the same, because it's 10.4, it's less than 10.3.
Okay. Can you correct that nicely?
There's.
Probably separate. What?
Oh, well, the number in 10.4 is put into 10.3, I guess is.
Correct.
But so I give more of my questions on 10.4, I guess, before you get it solved. There is, in board docs, there's a different number as far as the content that addressed the tariff number. I just was just double checking if that was.
That was a discussion item, yes.
Yeah, we just received that.
Yeah, we.
We just received that information today. So that may need to be, we may have to adjust this because of the tariff concern. So we just received that proposal today.
With a 12%, possible 12% here for grease.
Okay, that's why.
From the bus payment measure.
Which one we ever, if we need to.
So we probably will win that back for.
It's going to go. Yeah.
And that would be the total number, the 1.14, 1 point.
Yeah.
If that was the new amount, like the 12%.
So I guess in those, those where it's a question of 10.3, I didn't know if that need to be updated with a new number or.
It'll go in with the current number till we change it and then we'll just change the legal notice if we have on the. It's a legal notice that should be finished four times for the budget. So it'll go the first time at that up until we, if we change it, then that would change.
Yeah.
It would go back out to the press.
It has to be voted on again.
Correct, yes. We bring it back, but just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're going to move forward with 10.4.
Well, we have a motion. We aren't going to vote on 10.3, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Yes.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
It's a note 10.4, recommendation superintendent of schools board of education approve the bus purchase proposition to be placed on 5/20/2025 ballot. Need a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, everybody had it.
Jean?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Nora?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
All that time, I don't know why they're taking it up.
We need to make a policy to formally have the kids go first whenever we had a board game to remember that. I'd like to pick that up, a policy somehow or just.
Make a procedure.
Just need to.
Put it right at the top.
Try to get through your mind.
Okay. I want to move it up.
Unless anyone's changed their mind, there's a don't know yet from speaking, Dave?
Hey. What you're doing with your attention, you're given the detail and knowledge you're trying to learn deserves praise. No one has been to thank you in 10 years for the problems that you don't create or don't get now. Now, in January, Bozies presented an outlook on our 2025 budget, current year. And in there, they said, they projected, and their conservative is going to be $644,000 interest revenue, revenue for this year. Boards, the presentation had, I think, 254,000 in it. So I don't know how you reckon it's out of that. It also had a, I think it was an $800,000 profit or a surplus. So, you know, I wonder, you know, didn't see that in what was up there. The material you were given, which I haven't been able to get a copy of on Wednesday. You were given, my understanding, actuals, that is for the year and the close for the 2024. And then the budget for this year. Well, the most important information is the most current. And Bozies presentation used the most current. I suspect they used the first six months of the year because all this stuff is automated online. So I don't know why there's no linkage with those things. There's a lot of things that I wish would have been said for your attention and thought. If you, you know, you're given, here's these numbers, here's these numbers. But what's the significance of change or no change? One of the things that I looked at with concern is the, I'll say, the decline in headcount and then the increase in Bozies. I don't know the details of it, but you got to be careful if that is masking a problem somewhere else where you're taking, say, human services here and you're doing them up. Because that can have an effect on pensions and healthcare costs and other knock-ons effects, if you don't see it. One of the things that just blew my mind was I heard, correct, Mr. Farrell say there was 2,000, 270,000 that was going to be used for early retirement incentives. Teachers, it's a teacher's market right now. We don't want them to go away unless, you know, I can't. You do the math. You do the math of what it costs to bring in a new one and do that.
So we can't control, we can't control that. Time's up. But I will say one thing without getting into dialogue, that across the state at least, maybe across the country, there is an uptick in Bozies attendance. Irrespective of what district we're talking about, there seems to be an increase in students' interest in getting a certification and going to work rather than getting a certification and going to college. That's, and I think that's across the state.
What's, you have an answer?
There's one, one option.
Okay. What? What is region?
Two minutes, two minutes.
Student goals, what's region? What does region mean in those words?
That's what I was hoping.
Yeah, I mean, it's our Bozies.
Through title of Bozies, or did?
Oh, title of Bozies.
Okay.
Unless someone's changed their mind to speak.
Okay, I didn't know we needed to sign up.
Oh, absolutely.
Hi, RJ Faso. I emailed a couple of weeks ago and, you know, just last week, the executive order came out about postponing the Department of Education. There, I think there's just a lot of misconceptions and ignorance about the impact that might have locally. So anything you guys could do to provide some information to the community so we can reach out to the appropriate leaders to say, hey, this, this isn't all fraud, waste and abuse. This is, this is very important to us. So I appreciate you putting it on, you know, tonight's agenda and booking it tonight.
So we do have a discussion. I don't know why we started that way, the federal funding. And you, I assume you're talking big picture, not just the funding that we give from the federal government. Is that correct?
Well, I really don't know. Like that's, I guess, my main concern is because I haven't heard the state talking about eliminating education budgets or departments. So federal is my main concern.
I think, I think the biggest concern that I keep hearing in Albany is the custom Medicaid. And New York is so reliant on such a large amount of money from the federal government because we have a pretty expensive Medicaid program in the state. So what I keep hearing is if that's one of the things that gets hit really hard, there will be an effect on education budgets because it's probably, I think, one of the biggest budgets that the state has. There's just, I think, something that it knows right now in terms of what's actually real and not real. I know that there's a ton of advocacy going on. We certainly could share that as well. But you know, from this to council school superintendent, all these different groups are advocating, you know, to continue to support, I would say, our students in special needs and, you know, the IED grants and things that we're relying on while we're Title I. I think we're just shy, right around, just shy of a million dollars that we receive every year in those title grants. So not insignificant at all. And, you know, certainly we could share that if you want to reach out to local legislators and voice your concerns.
Thank you. Anything else, Kalen, or question about federal funding?
I just don't know if anybody really knows how much money is funded in New York State and how much gets passed through to us.
Right.
So, you know, we can think of things like Medicaid and Title I and that sort of thing. But no one knows that formula. Do I have some results? I'm blessed I'm not in this.
Oh, okay. Federal account?
The, I think part of the funding comes from, 45% comes from New York State. But New York State budget hasn't been approved yet. So how the heck do you know if you're going to get 5.75%?
Right now, currently, the initial, initial run, that's what we're projecting yet. Could that change? Sure. I don't, that's not what I'm hearing coming out of Albany right now. I think you have a governor that is being cautious with the education budget right now for some, for case of their reasons. I don't into those, but yeah, it's hard to say. I mean, you know, we've dealt, we've dealt with years with gap elimination adjusted. But I think right now, what my understanding is, is that everybody should be okay. It's really been a couple of years down the road that we don't know what else is going to shake out.
One more item was chronic absenteeism with around 20% in one of the groups. Yet some of the ladies here showed 91% at attendance. What's going on there?
Yeah, so those are, those are particular students that are chronic absenteeism versus the total population of students. The higher number, the 92, 93%.
So 20% of the students are chronic, of, of the absent students are.
Right, they're showing like 20% of the number of students in their building. That was the, the knowledge. I don't think you did the district. Yours was total district. Stacy's, I think, was just about their building. So we have it pinpointed down to the number of kids who are, who fall in that range.
We also had dual athlete participation. It says vote there, but I mean, we've talked about it for quite some time. I think we kicked the can down the road. I'm curious as to.
Well, they're already started. I mean, spring sports are already started. I mean, the vote, now you'd be telling kids, okay, now you can't do this.
Right.
So that's a little, we should have had a vote before.
Yeah.
Spring sports started.
We talked about that, but is there a requirement to have a vote? Is there a requirement on the board to have a vote? So.
I don't think there's a requirement to.
For us to have a decision?
Yeah. I think it's just been a topic of conversation with multiple factors to consider and, you know. I don't think it, I don't think it's going to get any easier on the, on the, on the spring teams by any means in terms of, of numbers and, but, you know, people have to do that.
Certainly they're allowed, they're going to be allowed to do that this spring.
They are currently doing it.
Well, they're going to basically stay in the same model that they were in last year. The coaches are going to work together to do the best they can. How that works out.
The kids are only getting 50% of each sport. Like they're probably trying to give 100% of themselves while they're there, 50% of the time. Not committing 100% to anything, which is. And it's still, you know, changing. They're trying. They're trying. They're doing what they can.
Right. Is that something, I mean, obviously wouldn't make it counter.
Counterproductive?
No, that counterproductive. We wouldn't retroactively make it force that now because it's.
Well, right, it's already started.
If we're looking, I mean, are we talking that we want to have a position? That, I, I have no, I've been a little nervous, you know.
Yeah.
Do we, do we need, if we don't need to have a position, do we want to have a position?
Well, just think down the road and this is going to be, this is going to be a problem. And then there's already kids talking, oh, they want to play two sports in the fall and, you know, we're, which I understand some are stack sports. There's section sports, if you can play two sports or not. But I mean, you got kids signing and going to college for, for the sports and then we're, you know, where's the line? Where's? I don't know. And then, you know, I know football has 51 number, 51 kids registered. I don't know if 51 actually show up to every practice, but, um, no JV, you know, there's not a JV. It's nine through 12. Except they're trying to make a JV. So, you know, like they're trying to put in games and get games in, but they don't have a coach. So it's, we might have a JV game, we might have not. We might not have a game. We're going to go on varsity schedule. We're not going to go on varsity. So it's still just this roller coaster of, you know, planning and trying to get it.
I recall when lacrosse came, when we go back in the late 90s. And I remember only because I had coached softball during that timeframe. I remember the impact it had on a girls' sport for the spring. And I remember initially, because we didn't have all the numbers, how the kids were given the opportunity to do lacrosse, but they had to make a choice between lacrosse track or softball. I just remember that was a very difficult time. They had just strictly a varsity team. They didn't have a JV team. Or maybe they started with a JV team and eventually were able to have two coaches and two levels. And so I just remember that eventually they had to make a decision, one sport or the other. It was very difficult for the kids because kids wanted to play lacrosse, but they also wanted to play softball, which is very much, they're very much torn. So, but I mean, they did recognize that they did make a decision.
That's, that's your position, that you should make a decision for next year with say, whether they do play lacrosse.
Yeah, and then, I mean, and even if they were, you know, 51, you have kids, you have classes of 100-ish students. You got 51 registered, you got half, half the class, but then you got, they're not even playing out there. It's just too many. So, I mean, I know you say the word cuts and that's, it's a very unpopular opinion. But, you know, you say, you might have cuts and there's no need, seven v. seven, there's no need to carry 51 kids and then only take the same 12 to 14 to every single game. So you still, like, it just. Yeah, my stance is to make a choice, you know. And, and if they're positioned with there, there's going to be cuts, you might have some of those kids are doing cartwheels on the sidelines deciding, you know, one of my, my sport that I've played my whole life is where I'm supposed to be. Or, you know, this activity is for me or this job is for me. It's me just hanging out is a waste of time.
I remember the girls, those that love softball, but also really wanted to play lacrosse because it was brand new to the valley here. They chose lacrosse over softball and then they played travel ball in the summer. So they had, passed both worlds and they were still very competitive. So, I mean, we just think the options need to be open for the kids to make a decision.
I will just chime in too, and I'll tell you just more coming. There is an email that started last week from section four for boys volleyball. So that's starting to be a talk as well.
Is that the same season? Is that fall as well?
That would be fall. So that would be a section four sport that would be allowed to dual participate with a stack sport. So we have not committed, I'm just saying, the email was initial last week and they were asking questions to the section and the section said it would be something that is, boys volleyball is becoming very popular. Section three, it's huge. Section five, it's huge. So.
It's huge everywhere but here.
So just, you know, this dual participation conversation is not going anywhere. So I'm going to point to it.
What is the rule? Is it stack or section? Which one can you not, does not allow the dual?
You cannot play through stack sports.
Not 50 stacks.
And then section four football is the only section four sport that has in their rules that you cannot dual participate. Because every year I have multiple people say, I'd love to be a kicker, soccer player. And then football actually has it in their rules and cannot.
Right. Well, then let's talk about the kids that aren't doing dual sports, that are committed to their one score and they're there 100% of the time. And then it's, you know, I mean, let's, let's face somebody's. And then, it's, you know, I mean, let's, let's face it, some of these kids are just, they're athletes and they can do it all and they love to do it all and that's their happy place. So, they're successful on all of the fields and all of the courts. So, they're gonna, they're gonna miss half the practices, but then they're still gonna come and they're gonna take the playtime. For kids that are there a hundred percent of the time, which, you know, I mean, it's, so, nothing to, coaches or anything, that's just the situation that it is, that is just going to continue to cause problems until it bubbles over and, and like I said, you already have kids that don't understand the rules. Sectional, section versus stack, it's, well, I want to do ball, I wanna do both, do sports and I wanna do sports and, so, I don't know. That's my stance. I know it's unpopular.
And I would say too, the cuts, cuts aren't out of the realm. I know that we, you know, we have cuts in varsity sports.
Right.
You know, basketball, I think this year, maybe, boys anyways had to make cuts. They had tournaments and try out and, I think we just made cuts JV baseball. So, there's a, you know, there's only so many you can take it at some way. It's just figuring out, I guess, deciding what that is, what that number really is.
If we're gonna continue to have lacrosse, then we need to invest in making full sports, maybe with modified JV and varsity. If we choose to allow kids to only make one, play one sport, schools our size are losing their JV sports. I don't think lacrosse, JV lacrosse is probably gone. JV softball is probably gone. So, but that, those are the consequences and there's great arguments all the way, so, seriously, I'm not trying to sway anything because.
Well, I just don't know why you don't, why you don't have a JV team when, I mean, you'd certainly have the numbers to create a JV team. And we have the conversations happening with the students about, we're gonna try and do JV games, we're gonna try and do just, so, why don't we just make a JV team?
I think the challenge region area now is there's a few and far between that actually have.
Yeah, there's, there's not that many that are fully committed.
So, they might, we might be able to elect a two, and I think we've had the good conversations with the varsity coach too, but, which is great. They'll be fine, but then they're gonna practice, practice, practice. And the other piece too, that I know is an issue that Ryan brought up that was shared with Penn is the, the number of referees to draft the game. So, they might be able to do more of like an enrichment, inner marrow, but still play and learn and.
Yeah, that's.
But ultimately, I think over time, yeah, there should, there's gonna have to be, if it, it's gonna be a full-blown program, they'll be wanting to make sure that we have.
Lacrosse is state and is growing, so yes, you would get to the point where you have a full-blown program and you could add a modified JV and varsity. Nobody is currently fully doing all three levels. There are some schools that are saying they'll, they'll do a JV. You know, I'm working with a coach to fit those in where we can, um, but yes, the officials is an issue. Um, they wrote to us and said, we, we might not be able to accommodate even all of the games on a certain night, so we might be asking you to move. So, now you're asking us to potentially add JV. That's gonna be a challenge. So, we, I've said, you know, if we're gonna do it, we would set it up more of a scrimmage to get those girls minutes, but it's not an official game. We're not going that route.
Yeah, and I, and I would, um, to the point of how many athletes go out for flag football, like, you know. Boys football is a lot of nine eleven, it's not that, I don't know how many we had on varsity football this year.
We had thirty-nine, forty-ish. Wouldn't have been near the end of the season, obviously, some kids come up for playoffs, but.
And I, I mean, boys football's a little bit more rough than flag football. You gotta have those, actually, like, you gotta have a higher number of roster.
I'm just, the only thing I'm trying to say is that, I think, and it would here, it should be proportional. 'Cause I don't think, I don't, I don't, I don't remember anyone ever getting caught from a football team. It's almost like, uh, you know, everyone gets to play and have a position to do something in part of the team. I think that's kind of been a mentality and I think maybe you can't do that with seven out of seven, but I think it's closer. And I, I think as long as the ratios are the same, you know, eleven on the field, what's our total? Seven on the field, what's our total? But I, I had a tough time with cuts.
I mean, we're fair enough to run a four, to run a scrimmage, maybe. But again, like seven v. seven, I don't know. A lot of waste of time around.
The varsity level, we have cuts and, and the option is, you can't have that many kids on the team. And you could have, we talked, I know you talked about JV, but we kept using the term inner marrows and, and I think you could definitely do that with the kids that were cut and they would be learning and they'd be scratching.
Yeah, we could a hundred percent do an enrichment.
I mean, I used to, fifty-one is not a workable number. You know, I thought it was more like less than that, actually, than that thirty or fifty-one number was kicked around, but still. I mean, I, I'm harsh, but varsity is, you get cuts. But we can provide for those kids in another way, is what I'm thinking. You know?
Well, are we gonna have a vote sometime in the summer for next year or?
Well, I.
Are you, are you gonna keep, I mean, I don't mind keep talking about it, but I mean, if we, at some point, we should either have a position or say we don't have a position.
I think the only reason we did, we're talking about it, right, is because no one had a position. State didn't care. Section Four didn't care.
You're not, no position or change in the state or in sections, not.
They're still, are they still, are they still complex? Come, should both, should teams continue to be successful? We're still gonna have conflict.
And I would tell you that, Mayn and Will and myself, that both brought that up to the section. Both of us could be at the same situation. And yet, there, there potentially could be conflict for playoffs.
I mean, not potentially, probably will. Yeah. Is that a question?
All right, so we'll respond to some comments when they arise. Well, I, we can vote for it in the summer. We can vote for it in the summer. I, I, really, I, I don't, I'm okay with having a position. I just, if, if the state doesn't say we have to, but the section isn't, then it just kinda put me on us to make a decision, which we can do, but I don't, I don't see a lot of.
Is that still kind of a talks, like, when they, as far as in the future, it's still looking like no one's gonna give guidance as far as.
Heard any guidance that's coming.
Section staff.
This doesn't apply just to softball and flag football. It happens in fall sports. It happens in winter sports, right? Don't kids participate?
Some kids that do indoor track.
So, I mean, if we made a policy, it would be the whole deal.
Yeah. The only fall sport it would impact would be field hockey. That's a Section Four sport. All other sports are, um, stacked. Uh, winter's indoor and then obviously when we get to spring, it's flag. But any impacts, yeah, I mean, track, all the other sports that cross over.
Maybe having a JV team solve the problem if we get to the pilot. A pilot update?
Yeah, just real quick, Dr. Fairlawn and I met with the I D A. I think it's been, I think it was two weeks ago. Really what we, the conversation is, they don't necessarily wanna be in the middle of any negotiation, so they recommended us that we should reach out directly to the company and, and have a conversation with them about our situation and even see if they're willing to, um, entertain that. So, we're, we're working on getting that information from, um, from the I D A. It's changed, it's changed hands into, to a different company. It's been bought by someone else, um, who wouldn't even know the, what, what we've done in the past with extending it before, so we'd have to start from scratch. But they would prefer not to be involved in that. They would just prefer that we try to connect with them and, um, and meet and see what they are willing or not willing to do.
So, what happens is, that just kinda draws it out, right? We do the, the schedule, that's with the stuff, but as far as the pilots coming in regardless, minus any, um, we're drawing out. We need to have an additional schedule, but.
It's so big, just one, if you scale it out, you'd have to scale it out for, for so long and it's just, it's gonna inflate your, you're gonna probably look at ten years of inflated.
And this may be a fair conversation that, again, is sensitive to the time as far as, I mean, if it gets, I mean, if I can get folded down with it, it's not going anywhere. Like, the pilot's still going to be there, so there's only so much that, as long as we're gonna get ahead of the, I'll say, the education of all the.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, it's a big discussion. Do you, do you have an idea of when you might be able to fill them out in terms of, will they get open to it or not?
Yeah, I hope, I mean, I'm waiting on getting the contact info, so as soon as we do, we'll reach out. So, maybe in the next couple of weeks, we should be able to reach out and hopefully get a, do something to start with, which is what we have to do. Yeah, sit down and have a face-to-face, yeah, we'll do that.
Marathon Health, um, so, and then we'll split.
Um, I, I, yeah, my understanding is that their last meeting, um, came out three to three, but the one that wasn't there, is in favor, I guess, from my understanding of, of moving forward, so that, I think they're gonna revisit and, and finalize that vote maybe at their next meeting. I'm not sure. But I think from a marathon standpoint, they were kinda hoping that we'd be able to give them some answer of, of, you know, where we're at with that. But it sounds like, yeah, it's close, but it sounds like that they're potentially gonna move, wanna move forward. They're probably just waiting for us.
Your thoughts?
Well, I, I'd make a motion to do it, you know, in second and have a discussion. I'll make a motion to do the Marathon Health. Second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I'm in favor of it. I've talked about it in the past. Um, I think over five years, we will save, estimated one point two million dollars. Uh, we're running out of ideas and ways to attack health insurance. The district should get an awful lot of credit for making the move to the high deductible plan, which has saved a lot. Or, we're back at the, uh, the annual increase of seventy-eight percent. So, now what? I think Marathon has agreed to up their E N A from five percent to ten percent, so, uh, so that's a good thing. And regardless, if Mayn and Will doesn't do it, um, I think that there's other entities locally that would probably partner with us, I'm not sure. So, I thi- I think it's a, I, I think it's a good investment. I think we're at a lease gonna break even and as far as the three hundred thousand dollar startup cost, uh, there's reserves to cover that. I think in health insurance reserve to do that. So, I, I think.
The other piece, the other piece to consider is we will, we will have eventually have some opportunities for aid back on some of those administrative costs. What that ends up being, um, who knows, but, um, I think the state, as I've said a bunch of different times, just the folks that I've talked with at the state level are extremely interested in this kind of center idea and that they'd be willing to help support ways for us to make some of these costs achievable. So, the three hundred you're talking about might turn into two hundred, two twenty-five, depending on, depending on where that falls, so.
If there's multiple districts that have co-share, one or two B O Cs, is that the?
So, there's, yeah, there's a current co-share right now that we run, uh, prescription drug through, uh, Keenan, and that is in the cap region B O Cs. So, they're, I think they're trying to couple it with, with that B O Cs and.
That's an addition to the.
Yes, yeah, there'll be additional to that.
Okay.
I've read the contracts, start to finish, and I've studied the numbers and I just, I just can't wrap my mind around it. I just don't think it's something in this district, especially in today's times and everything that's happening, budget and government funds. There's just too many moving parts and too many unknowns for me. And I love the idea. I think it's a great concept of supplementing our health insurance program and helping our employees, but I, I just, I have a lot of questions. And I've studied and studied and I know everybody's very helpful, helping me to understand it, but I just can't. I just don't think, I'd rather be one of those people that joined later if it was a success. I just, it's too risky for me.
What's your, what's your number one concern?
Um, because I think the numbers, I mean, I, I know they say they throw in an extra point thousand a year and then, I, I'm not concerned that people won't drive to it, 'cause I mean, I think people go to the bus stop and do it all the time. Um, I just think people like their own doctors. I just, I just have some problems with the model. I think it sounds good on paper, but I just don't think it will work.
You know, there's a lot of emphasis underlying on the folks that don't go to doctors are going to embrace this. Because if you're, if you have a doctor, I don't know, it could be hard, I should probably, let your head go outside to, to change, I guess, for some cost savings.
And there is not, like, physicians assistant and there's no doctor. They are underneath, two layers underneath. And, I don't know, I think, I don't love that. And I don't think they could afford to have a, a physician on site. I don't know, I just, I don't like it.
It would be an addition, right? It would, it would be a service provider.
Right.
And not a, necessarily a, your P C P.
Right. It might be for some that would decide to do that, but I think a lot of the access for urgent type of care, you know, where you might go to the, well, walk in someplace or you might go to the emergency room. This would be a viable option for you to, to be able to attend there. And then, I think, depending on their experience, if they have a good experience there, then they may be likely to come back. So, I think we all know that getting into your, into the primary care physicians in most places, there, there's just a shortage of that. That's the concern.
And then, you know, into the contracts, that, um, whether people are interested or not in one of the requirements or edit employee, the district will have to have the name, email address, address. They would have to submit it to me. I thought it was in that contract. I mean, I, I know that's not, people find that probably going online, but I thought it was kinda weird. And then even things like food shops, that would be an additional cost. To me, that would be something that they would do. I don't know. I'm just, I'm not settled with it. Sorry. I really would like to do something for my employees. I would, 'cause I, they work so hard and seeing the work at the school, they do such a fed and chat. I know a bus driver's, I'm on to a bus for twenty years and I know how, how they all work. I just don't feel like this is something I can say yes to right now.
And you have to balance it. Both sides of the, both sides of the.
I just don't, I've thought about it, thought about it.
Though, this is to precede the discussions. This is not to, is this the last?
No, I think this is to lock in and do it, because we're, we've got the least that's sitting out there.
Well, it's not, I mean, five years from now or a year from now, I don't know. It's, it, I, I think they need to commit that to us of what they're doing at this potential facility.
I guess, what would it look like in five years if we say this isn't good? 'Cause there's a, what happened with the high deductible plan didn't work out. We'll, we're back to seventy percent increases and, but we're not going back to the other way up here, the same increases. So, how do we back, step back in five years if that doesn't work? Is my only. I think we should.
It's a service. It's a service. So, I think it might be a five-year contract.
It is five, yeah.
So, I mean, five years it doesn't work out.
Yeah, so you're gonna commit to five and if it felt like it didn't work, then, you know, you're out of the package.
Uh, I probably read it, but in the contract, if you're in the five years, can you change the doctor? Well, can you add a doctor? Well, it's a cost, but can you change any of the providers in there? Like, let's say the, you know, a P A just isn't working.
Yeah, I think we can revisit the contract with them and, but, I mean, obviously, it'll fluctuate the costs if you decide to. You know, I know we've talked about, you know, the mental health component, we can try to add that down the road. So, um, yeah, cost benefit, I guess, in terms of what, what you specifically end up told, but.
Well, that lieutenant has, is whatever service they provide, if I can't get it locally from my place, maybe it's an option, a quick, it could be another quick option. Or definitely, for employees, could be a quick option to jump over there for them, so.
You could just make a motion to, whichever.
Make a motion moves up there.
The other discussion?
How was the, was it, you saw it, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's actually, um, it's nice. It really doesn't need a ton of, ton of work, you know, maybe, you know, some facelift stuff in terms of, like, some painting on that. But that, it's not a place where they have to go in and really reconstruct a bunch of stuff. It's.
World is investing.
So, um, you know, we're almost. So, um, you know, we're almost right across the road from Best Buy.
Yeah, yeah.
Right there, there's.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I would just add, just going, you know, in terms of cost savings towards health insurance in the future, either we need to look at new plans, um, we need to ask the employees to pay more, or we have to increase consumerism, and that's what this is an attempt to do, because the incentive is, is going to the doctor and paying thirty or forty dollars, paying from your HSA, as opposed to, um, going to your, your doctor and paying a hundred and fifty bucks, so, uh, that's, that's the incentive, the consumerism side.
Did we say that we're gonna inquire teachers, uh, employees, or have you, did we do it, did we discuss that?
Came up in the session, I don't know.
I think, I don't think we ended up doing it, just because of the, the education behind what it really is, that's part of what they do, um.
Big part of their budget is commoditizing it.
Right, and that's.
And I think the decision was made that since it's a service, there was a need to, to.
Yeah.
Um, serve it for the employees.
And all those items would be achievable, so we would see, we would generate some revenue back to the district.
I don't know, let's talk about fee to the label with the way it's going right now, I don't know.
Yeah, true.
Very unknown.
Things could change.
So to this reward, I guess, um, risk of the investment, kind of savings you may have for an employee, so.
Could be great.
More discussion, go to a vote?
Jean.
I.
Linda.
No.
Jessica.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
John.
We gotta try something, yeah.
Nora.
No.
John.
I.
Motion due.
Okay. Well, I mean, I, I gotta say, I think this is all the few votes that we've had, and we've had split, and I think we're all gonna live through it, and expect the chosen.
It's healthy, it's always agree.
It's a good healthy thing, yes, um, twelve point two, next meeting is in March thirty-first, Monday, and they have additions of that, correct?
Yeah.
Do you have that now?
Uh, I think so.
Well, we'll wait and see.
Yeah, I mentioned it earlier, right now, right now, really, the primary reason for that meeting is to approve bids, so, uh, for the.
Okay, and then, uh, in motion to adjourn the record meeting, summer.